Ready? Welcome, everybody, to a Shelton City Commission Study Session. And my name is Gary, and I am the mayor. And we're going to start the meeting today by Commissioner Tracy Moore reading a proclamation.
Yes, I am very happy to do this, and I'm glad that two members of our local American Legion Post 31 are here. This is a City of Shelton proclamation. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16th as a wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas, over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization which now numbers more than 2.5 million members, men and women, in over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their family, the youth of America, and its citizens. And whereas, the members of the American Legion are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas, the 2016 Observance of American Legion Month provides an opportunity to legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to our community. Now, therefore, the City Shelton Commission does hereby proclaim September 2016 as the American Legion Post Number 31 Month in the City of Shelton.
And here's your city proclamation. You're welcome. Yay! Congratulations. You're welcome. Within if you guys would like to speak.
Somebody could certainly say something. Absolutely.
My name is Dave Brown. I'm the current commander for the post now. Things that we're doing at this time, Constitution speech control for the seniors with two contests for them, and also boy state, we pushed that things. But let me give you a little history, if you've got five minutes.
We, for you, we got five minutes, easy.
Just, these are a couple notes from the very first notebook of Post 31. And the first meeting they had was July 14, 1919. And on the second one, it was chosen then to, which was August 6, by the way, and to become the name of Fred B. Wyble. It'd be the name of this post. And that charter was received in September 3, which then made it Post 31, Fred B. Wyble. And that's an old name from this area. And the fact, we still have a member, Harvey Wyble is still a member of our post. And the new hall we have over here, Memorial Hall, with first meeting we had, and that was 1924, November 18. And that was put together by a bunch of people, and a lot of help, a lot of help. So, anyway, the American Legion is here to help in as many times, as many ways as we can. And we volunteer different things around to do different. He's a Kiwanis member, and as Tracy can admit, I've been with Habitat for Humanity for about 12 years.
I thought that was you under your hat.
Yeah, that's me.
I says, I wonder, you got a new hat?
Yeah. So, and we have a lot of volunteers in this, just a good group of people. More members would be good. We have about two, over 200 members here locally, and participation would be great. And it's good to see our local people come back to put their effort into town here. So, anyway, that's all I got to say. Got something?
I'd like to add something, if I may, on the Constitutional Speech Contest. On this contest, a student can go learn, can earn up to $18,000 in scholarships. Yes.
Yeah. I'm going back to school.
If you know any, you know, any student in the Shelton High School who likes to write and has a good memory and can memorize what they write, let us know. We had a young man from the state of Washington won the contest for the entire country. So, and he, $18,000 worth of scholarships. And furthermore, on a boy state that we have, this is where a young man goes, take the juniors who are going to be seniors, and they learn government, how to govern, make laws and what have you. So, this is what we do.
Very good.
They get to spend a whole week being government. And they do mayors, they become senators, they do all this stuff during this week. So, they get a feel of what goes on in the government end of things, and it's the good things.
Thank you very much for your support of the community.
Thank you.
You're getting Memorial Hall remodeled.
Yes, it looks really great.
You know what I was thinking?
Signing.
Did they get a permit to do that?
Oh.
The county did it. If you get a chance to look, it looks beautiful.
County money, but it's looking good.
It is, it's very nice.
Let's give my hand one more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, the floor in that hall is original, 1924, '25. And they sand it down, looks like a new golf course.
Yes, more than careful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll turn the meeting over to our city administrator, Ryan Wheaton, for a letter of support.
Thanks, Mayor and Commissioners. We have two letters of support that I'm going to ask you to make a motion, allowing me to sign for the city to support. One is from Mason Transit Authority, a letter to support their Washington State Department of Transportation 2017 through 2019 Consolidated Grant Program. You have a copy of that with you. The other letter is from the Chamber, and this is a grant they're applying for, excuse me, this is from the Downtown Visioning Advisory Committee, asking for a letter of support for the National Endowment for Arts, a grant called Our Town. So, the two of those are in front of you. And if you would do so, I would be able to sign those.
Okay. Should we just go ahead and do a motion, separate them, just in case there's any?
Sure.
Okay. So, I guess I would request a motion on the first letter of support for the Mason Transit Authority. So...
I'll move that we accept a letter of support from the Mason, for the Mason County Authority to Washington State Department of Transportation for 2017 through the 2019 Consolidated Grant Program.
Okay.
I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, in support of Mason Transit Authority getting a grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They got our blessing. And now, I would entertain a motion also to support the Chamber in this National Endowment for Arts grant. Does somebody want to make that motion?
I will do that. I move that we authorize our city administrator to sign a letter of support for the Downtown Visioning Advisory, application for National Endowment for the Arts for an Our Town grant.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to support the Chamber in their endeavor to receive some grant money. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They also get our support for that. And I would think, at this time, would either of those groups like to speak a little bit about this, prepared or unprepared. We're kind of a small community, so...
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Julie Nichols, co-chair of the Downtown Visioning Advisory Committee, thank you for your support. I appreciate it. And to clarify, this is the Downtown Visioning Advisory Committee. I also wear a Chamber hat, but I'm not wearing that Chamber hat right now. We are a committee of diverse interests, downtown business interests, not just Chamber interests, and we've been working really diligently since the end of last year to take steps and make recommendations to make our downtown more walkable, more family-friendly, and more economically vital as well. So, we believe this grant opportunity in partnership with Fort Terra and the Pomegranate Center is a great way to further that mission. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will just make a little comment to say that, as a business owner and living downtown, that my life has been spared greatly since we narrowed the center lanes down to just two lane. That's probably the biggest thing I know, because it gives you a chance to walk out a little bit, and you're also not looking for four lanes, you're looking for only two lanes of traffic. I think that was the greatest move. And personally, on the record, I would love to see that expanded, maybe another block down towards First and possibly one or two blocks down, because it's just, to me, it's not a bottleneck. It's walkability, and I think is a very good improvement to the community. That's me just speaking, my ideas on that. Thank you. Any other comments on either of these letters? Is there anybody from the transit that wants to say anything? Seeing none? Okay, we approved it. Thank you very much, Ryan. Next is our weekly commission reports, and usually I go to my left, but I get confused from that hall and this hall. Tracy, would you like to give your report?
Yeah, we messed you up. Okay, today, I'm really happy to report that this morning I had a long meeting with two railway consultants who are interested in helping further the efforts to retain the railway and the roundhouse. They're both federally recognized and have excellent qualifications. So, I'm excited to move forward with them. I'll be meeting with them more in the future. So, it's nice to have that support from people who really know what they're doing. So, I'm very, very thankful for that, and also for the support of the friends of the Simpson Railroad, who are helping to facilitate these meetings. Today, this afternoon, at 5:30, there is a parks meeting, looking for public input onto the parks comprehensive plan update and the planning process that we'll be looking at for future parks and trails. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting with a port commissioner to discuss upcoming projects and discuss how we can work together on different projects that would benefit both the port district and the city, which of course would benefit our whole community. There is a housing coalition I have tomorrow afternoon. Wednesday, 7:30, is the Homes First Heroes for Housing Breakfast, which some of you will be attending. And if anyone else would like to come, I can get you in. I have a meeting tomorrow with retired Public Development Authority expert, who is also helping me with the potential of setting up a Public Development Authority to run the roundhouse and the museum effort. So, I'm very happy about that. There's a, an after hours tomorrow at 5:30, I will be attending.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday. On Friday, I have a Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization meeting, which is a regional meeting of five counties, where we discuss potential for funding and projects for a five-county area. And then, there is a preview, which everyone is invited to, to look at the recently acquired veterans' housing buildings at the end of 7th Street, prior to their updates they're going to do. They're going to be going in, Homes First is, and rehabbing the buildings. And so, it's an opportunity for the public to get involved from the very beginning of this exciting project.
What day is that and what time?
That's Friday from 11:30 to 1:00.
11:30 to 1:00, okay.
And that's it for my week.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner McDowell?
Well, talking about veterans, I went up and hung around a little while up on Seattle Street the other day while they were revamping this house for a veteran. And there were, there's like a bunch of busy bees, they all had their orange shirts on, and they were getting work done. They put a new fence up, they put a flagpole with a flag on it, they did the yard work, they new flooring in the house, new, did the bathroom, freshened up, I think he got new appliances. This is a veteran that very much deserved this to happen, so I was excited to watch that. Wednesday, I'm going to the breakfast. Homes First benefits supporting affordable rental housing in Thurston County, so I will be there. And then Wednesday evening, I have after-hours, and I'm going to try to get to the veterans' update on Friday. So, that's my week.
Very good. Tomorrow, Tuesday, I will be in Renton and attending a statewide mayor's exchange conference, and looking forward to that, talking about many issues that Shelton has in, similar to those other cities, and always looking for new and fresh ideas, different ideas on how to tackle some of our problems. And so, I'm looking forward to that. Wednesday, I will be meeting with our city administrator, with the executives from the Department of Health, to talk to them a little bit about water tanks. And obviously, Mr. Clark will be there in that meeting, and funding, and the water lines, and things like that. So, that completes our commission reports. And next is a general public comment. Do we have somebody signed in to speak today?
Yes, we have. Marilyn Bogler.
Okay.
Marilyn Bogler, 420 East Poplar. It's not hard, when you listen to the things that have been said this morning and in recent weeks, to understand the importance of housing issues in our community. From the new veterans' housing for homeless vets, to the Homes First gathering, to the issues last week about how utility charges impact duplexes, to an incident that I heard about outside these rooms in the vicinity of Brewer Park. We have abatement issues on the agenda today. November 7, we'll see the public hearing on the update of our comprehensive plan. Shelton was told one of the elements that needed to be updated in that plan this time was the housing unit specifically addressing affordable housing. Our current housing element says, "The goal is to encourage the availability of an adequate supply of housing at price ranges and rent levels that meet the community's needs." And obviously, we're not there. In October, almost a year ago, the staff report with a draft of the housing element proposed text changes, including, quote, "New draft policies intended to facilitate the development of quality, affordable housing to address ever-changing demographics and evolving market demand," close quotes. I want you to remember that changing demographics don't only mean seniors living on huge retirement incomes that happen to move into big fancy homes in Shelton. Changing demographics include more and more people out of work, people with mental health issues impacted by the state Supreme Court ruling on hospitals, people made homeless by rising rents, foreclosures on homes, domestic violence. Those made homeless by our abatement policies. And as horrible as the two recent instances on Cookson and E Street were, those buildings housed people who are now congregating in our city parks. Their housing, however abysmal, having been abated. This is our changing demographics. The proposed text changes say, add two elements first, that we will ensure that all residents of Shelton have an equal and fair opportunity to obtain adequate, safe, and sanitary housing suitable to their needs and financial resources, regardless of, and it has this whole race class, et cetera, regardless of income. This means persons that may have an income of thousands of dollars a month, to those who may have only hundreds of dollars a month. The second, Shelton will allow development of residential buildings that have shared facilities, such as single-room occupancy facilities and microhousing, if you would allow me a little bit longer.
Just to finish your thought.
These are a beginning, but I urge you also to think about zoning, about density limitations, about parking requirements, about providing stock housing plans, about figuring out how the costs of standard utility charges might be different for very small homes. Think about how rules and regulations the city has in place are making affordable housing impossible to build.
Thank you.
I'll be back later.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else this time?
We have Forrest Cooper.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, Mayor. I'm up here today with a whole bunch of excitement I'm trying to contain, so I'm going to try and wrap my head around everything I'm trying to say here into words. You paved my road, thank you so much. It looks amazing. It's so awesome to see so many roads being paved, going up Angle Side and up Turner. I think there's like three or four just within a few blocks of each other, roads that weren't even paved before, they were just rock. It's really, really awesome to see that happening. And ours was just one of the little roads on there, but I'm so grateful for that. And I think one of the big accomplishments that y'all should pat yourselves on the back for is getting the transportation benefit district in order and allowing that to generate some funds. I know, early on, it was cool to watch the whole process, and I know I was a little bit critical of it early on, but as it evolved and as everything happened, I was so tickled with the results. And a big props to former Commissioner Olson here for everything he did to make that happen, and you guys too. One little anecdotal story to go with that. It's so cool that we have the two tenths of a percent on the sales tax that is going to that, because everybody gets to help participate in making our streets better and our roads better and our overall quality of life better. The other day, I was taking our babysitter home, little young gal, and we're talking in the car, and I said, "Oh, yeah, they're paving these roads, isn't that awesome?" She's like, "Yeah, it's great to see." And I said, "You know, you help pay for that every time you buy something at the store, right?" She goes, "Really?" So, we started talking about how it works. And she, as this young gal, was so excited to see that, wow, even I'm making a difference in our community just by shopping local. So, once again, congratulations to everybody, Public Works too, you guys, you guys did awesome, especially with the, like, the limited equipment you guys have worked for. That road up there, it looks nice. Nice job.
I just want to make the comment about that, is that I'm driving around town, and I go, "That road was dirt, and now it's paved. It's so pretty." Yeah, good job, good job.
That it?
Nope. We have Ms. Julie Nichols.
Okay.
Thank you. If you'll allow me one more moment, wearing a different hat this time. I, as many of you know, again, Julie Nichols, for the record, am part of a group who's been trying to get a community recreation center in our community. We started out last summer and compiled a public survey that went out. We released the results. Many of you were there last fall, and since then have been proceeding down the road of achieving this dream of a community recreation center. And I know that the city is either in the process of, or has already compiled some results of public opinions on recreation and how it might involve the city. And I'll just update you briefly. At a meeting at the end of July, this community recreation center took better shape, and the community decided which bells and whistles they wanted, which bells and whistles they didn't, and committed to getting involved in the reality of seeing this through. So, right now, we're breaking up into subcommittees to find a site. We have a name, it's called The Shark. And if you haven't already gotten an email, I'm sure you will, about getting involved. But as the city is thinking about the city's future in recreation, we would just ask that you continue to be willing to being a partner in this community recreation center effort. So, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else?
That's it for now.
Okay. All right, next is our consent agenda, which we don't have, our old business, which we don't have, and our new business, which we don't have. Very rarely we have all three of those as none, but we have some items that we're going to talk about at this time, and I'll turn our meeting over again to our city administrator, Ryan Wheaton.
Thank you, Mayor. We are ready to talk about the duplex utility ordinance that we have, has been on and off this agenda, but mainly through Public Works the last couple meetings. A brief recap of what I've been able to figure out happened. So, in February, staff brought forward to this group information that we need to do some housekeeping, is the way it was phrased, around language in the duplexes. What we had up until recently is we had duplexes in the city. We have 125 duplexes, 48 of them are what all consider the old duplex, that had one meter. So, that bill went to one account. There was some issue that was noticed prior to February, where all other types of housing were billed according to, well, billed according to how many counts they had. With these duplexes, 48 out of 125, these duplexes were billed one base fee, and the balance of the duplexes were billed two base fees, based on the fact that there were two counts associated with the two meters that were attached to those duplexes. The decision was made to get all the duplexes on a level playing field and change the code so that those duplexes would be treated like single-family homes, and that they would be billed by dwelling unit. So, across the board, all duplexes would be given two base fees because they have two dwelling units attached, regardless of how many meters that they have. The issue that I have with the way it was brought forward is that we weren't very clear when we presented it to the commission, and we weren't very clear when we presented it to the public. There was very little discussion at that meeting by either commission or the public in my mind, watching those videos, because it wasn't made very clear. And folks that were going to be impacted would not have guessed, based on the language that we put forward as staff. In addition to that, we failed to notify the 48 duplex owners that this change was coming. So, what we had in June, when the change was actually put into effect, is that people opened up their bills, and where they might have expected a $125 bill, they saw a $195, a $200 bill. We did a sample of the 48 duplexes affected, we sampled 12 of them, and across the board, we saw 33% increase in the bill. Some folks had as high as 54%. But again, this was done without warning to those folks, they just opened it up and received it. There was a note in the Journal that went forward, but from this meeting, from the information that went forward from staff, it would have been very difficult to tell what was actually going to happen. So, a couple things have come from this. One, we need to figure out a way to mitigate the impact of the people that were affected. And at the same time, we need to make sure that we eventually get folks on the same playing field, regardless of their duplex has one meter or two. We're going to bring some information forward to you next week to start that process, but we want to make sure that in times where we need to potentially look at a reset and go through the process the appropriate fashion, that we actually do that. Additionally, we sat down with Finance and with Public Works and came out with what the correct process should have looked like. And both sides were in agreement with the steps to go through that makes, to make sure that we're actually checking up on any potential impacts, so that when we bring forth information on any rate changes for utility payers, that we have all the likely impacts presented so that not only three of you know, but the public knows as well. So, that is what happened in a nutshell. I mentioned that it was about a 33% increase. Just straight dollar figures, $66.83 on average was the increase in the bill that those 48 duplex owners saw.
What, I'm sorry, repeat that.
$66.83 was the average.
Okay. Increase, right?
That was the dollar increase, yeah.
Okay, so you're going to be bringing something forward then?
We will. We'll bring something forward next time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess item number two is the abatement update?
It is abatement, and our interim Community Economic Development Director, Jason Dose, is going to present that for us.
Still not used to that title.
Yeah, well...
I was going to introduce myself as the senior planner, operating in the capacity at Times, Community Development Director. Ryan asked me to come and give you an update on some recent abatement proceedings, the most obvious, I think, being, you know, the unfortunate fire at the McConkey Building, the old brick hotel across from Mel Cheverlay site. We were hoping the property owner would clean up the balance of the site, but we, you know, really didn't hear anything from him. So, due to the state of it, it was an ob... really didn't hear anything from him, so due to the state of it, it was an obvious hazard, nuisance. I spoke with Ryan and we decided to contract with Bill McTernan, have the rest of the site cleaned up, which was completed last week, so we'll be leaning the property for that additional cost. The United Way Day of Caring, which I'm sure you all heard about, I saw the reporting on that, helped us finalize two other very, I won't state the addresses, but some two other very, what do you wanna say, severe code enforcement sites that we'd been working with for quite some time. The, kind of the direction I wanna go in the near term with code enforcement and abatement will deal more with some of the smaller sites at this point, meaning, you know, we've concentrated the last few years on literally taking down some of, you know, derelict buildings, dangerous structures, flat-out hazards. One more we will be speaking about is the old, the Red Barn, some people call it, the old bowling alley in between, you know, right there on First Street in between Domino's and, is it Happy?
Chinese Gardens.
Chinese Garden, Happy Garden?
Happy Garden. Chinese food.
That one's been cited by our emergency personnel as not only a source of constant calls, but it's a hazard. If that building either falls, goes up in flames for some reason, I mean, you're jeopardizing structures adjacent to it. So I have put a call in to a gentleman that had offered up a bid to deconstruct the building, so hopefully in the next week or two, we can meet with him, see if that's realistic, see if that's something we can pursue. So I'll be reporting back on that. But like I said, part of the reason I was late today is, I'm glad to say, I was meeting with a series of people that kept coming to the counter that are interested in building in town. And, not to belabor the subject, but I think a struggle some of them come across is, you know, is they're either looking to invest in a property or buy a vacant property and construct a new, you know, they kinda look around the neighborhood and say, "Okay, you know, I'm gonna have to spend a lot of money to develop this site, you know, looking down the street, there might be a couple couches in a side yard that you can see, you know, visible from the street front edge, there might be a broken-down vehicle." As I told you a minute ago, we've concentrated on some of the more egregious sites. What I've asked our code enforcement staff to do is start turning to the, you know, the lesser sites that, in my opinion, haven't gotten the attention some of the more egregious sites have gotten in recent years, because we do have very limited time, but just so, you know, you know, I don't know if you'll be getting some calls or not, but I've asked them to start stepping up what are perceived as the easier sites, but they really do take time as well, so I wanted them to start putting these people on notice, because we gotta start thinking about reinvestment in our existing neighborhoods, and you gotta put on the goggles of the developer that's coming in that wants to reinvest in those neighborhoods. So, you know, we definitely wanna make it easier for them. So some of the fee discussions you guys have had in recent years, I mean, you know, that helps in the discussion, but the other piece that I don't feel we've addressed, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, trying to ensure people's investment, and that, you know, that means reminding people of some of our nuisance codes, you know, that you can't store these things in public view. So, that's...
I was under the assumption, six months, eight months, a year ago, that you were gonna start coming down on people with the old cars parked out.
Oh, yeah. I don't have a number, but Eric Burke, our code enforcement officer, has been working very closely with Darren's staff.
On those cars? Have they hauled a bunch away?
Oh, they've been hauling them away by the week.
Yay.
Cars, boats, RVs, but, I mean, that's a piece of the puzzle.
Right, well, sure.
What I'm talking now is, you know, there are several locations that have appliances sitting in front yards, they have old furniture sitting in front yards and side yards.
So, are you complete with that?
Well, and I just wanted a thumbs up on the hotel property down here. I drove down there the other day and all this excavation equipment was working, busy bees, and it came back and it was smooth, it's got hay or straw over the top, it's beautiful. And that, along with the piece of property next to it, would be an awesome piece of property built something.
Oh, yeah. It's a fairly realistic redevelopment site now, I think.
Yeah, it looks really nice. Thank you.
So what we're looking at is that you have people who own the places where the garbage is sitting there, and you, in contacting them, I would imagine you're saying, "You have to clean this up," and they don't have the ability or the desire to do that. So, just so I, myself and the public understand, then what have you been doing, what is the next step that the city's been doing? Do we clean it up and then we give them a bill, or what is the next, because if we didn't, well, I think we're all in, putting some teeth into this stuff, you know, I think we've been talking for a long time about...
The way the code reads, I mean, you'd like to think that when we contact a property owner, they're gonna be, "Oh, hey, I'm sorry," you know, "clean it up right away," and that does happen, but there are several where they need a little encouragement, as it were. The code does allow for fines, we don't like to use those, you know, willy-nilly, so to speak, we use them as a last resort, but it is brought up early on in the process. Typically, historically, I'll say, we would generally start with a contact. I would just knock on your door, or our code enforcement staff would, and just, you know, inform people, "These are actually violations, you know, I'd hope you could clean them up," and we'd talk to them about what needs to be done, and they'd tell us, "Oh, you know, I can probably get to that in a week or two or a month," and, you know, we'd jot that down, say, "Okay, great, you know, I'll come back, check it out in a week or a month." The next step would be, if nothing had occurred, you formalize it, you write a literal nuisance letter, formalizing it, you have 30 days to comply, if you don't comply within that timeframe, you're risking fines, you know, and we work with our police department to actually issue the fines on these things. We don't like to go there. We have had some folks that do struggle, they might have a hard time...
Financially.
Financially. And, you know, the response I personally try to take in those situations, you know, ask them, "Do you have a neighbor that can help you out? Do you have family members that can help you out?" We generally, in my opinion, I don't necessarily wanna be in a position where the enforcement agency is paying to clean up, you know, I understand hardship, I mean, I get that, but it got, oftentimes if we're coming to the house, it's not a short-term problem, it's, these are items that have either built up over time, oftentimes it's a repeat visit, meaning there will be letters in the file from previous code enforcement officers, so it's not, it shouldn't come as a surprise to the property owner, you know, if you deal with these things as they come up, not just store them in your yard, it's easier to bite off. If you end up with a big pile in your yard, yeah, it's a little more difficult. But, so to answer the question pointedly, I mean, some of the options I suppose we could offer up are several groups in town that have helped people clean up, you know, we'd certainly offer that up, but at the end of the day, you know, we have the commission to answer to and the neighbors. You know, oftentimes we've got a neighbor reporting these things to us, it's not just us scouting out and finding these things, I mean, we've got a neighbor calling us saying, "Hey, you know, I keep my yard up, why don't these guys, why aren't these guys held to the same standard?"
So I wrote down something before, you mentioned what you just mentioned, and that I would say that at the point where they didn't do the first 30 days or something, and they're having some financial problems, or they might be willing to do this, says, "Okay, here is a list of the phone numbers of these groups that will help you. Will you call them and meet with them and ask them?" Because there are groups that, whether it's the United Day Cleanup, it could be, you know, or there's other groups that do things like that, the Baptist Church has a group called Boaz, which does that, you know, and so, but if the two don't get connected, then we have a neighborhood that's run down, so I would like to make a suggestion, that we get a list of the actual groups that are open to do that, no charge, they're volunteer groups, and the owner, if there's not a legal problem in that, giving that list to them, for example, and that would be possibly one way to prevent us fining them, one way of getting things cleaned up a little sooner, and the big way of no cost to the city. Not that some of these things we can't put money into, but I think giving them the list of the people that are willing to come and help them clean up their yard and move the stuff away, and then keeping track that if this, a year from now collects again, we can say, "Hey, look at, we just did this on your property last year, we, you know, we said you couldn't do it," you know, I mean, I think that giving them a list of groups that are willing to come and do that would be a definite at the fine, their 30-day fine thing. If they refuse, or even, can we give your name to the group? That might be another possibility. So that's one suggestion, which doesn't cost anybody anything, and I think there's a lot of people out there that wanna volunteer and help in those situations, but unless they get the two ends connected together, so would that be a possible suggestion then?
I like the idea, and I was actually gonna look back at some of our news agencies and ask that if they wanna contact me, these groups, I wasn't aware of the church group you were talking about.
Well, and there's, I mean...
If they wanted to contact me, we could just put a list together, I wouldn't vouch for any one group over the other, just a list of resources, "Hey, contact these folks, see if they can help you out." That would be actually very valuable, I think.
Okay, so I saw our city administrator jot that down, were you gonna kind of follow up on that?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So, in my neighborhood, there's a house kitty corner from me, and it's going into foreclosure, but it's a disaster. So how do you work with those? You find out the bank that will own that and then go to the bank?
Absolutely, and those are the sites where generally a little more, I don't wanna say eager, but we generally find a little quicker when it's a bank or a management agency, that, I mean, that's their job to maintain the property, you know, and if you keep on top of it, it's protecting their investment that presumably they're gonna make money on in the future. It's a little different than someone who's owned their house for 60 years, they're on a fixed income, I mean, in my mind. So we'll work with them to a degree, but generally, we're a little quicker to pull the trigger on...
Okay. I'm gonna give you that address.
Thank you.
Got your first statement. Yes, I do have, I do have some comments too. I think this is a huge, huge issue, as far as what we are willing to accept and what our citizens are willing to accept, and as long as it is acceptable for people to have garbage and crap in their yards, they all have garbage service, I mean, come on. So it's changing the whole culture of acceptance, and it's, sure, there are big items, which I think is very reasonable to ask for help, but you have to understand that these groups that are doing it, volunteering, there is a cost associated with that, with the dump, with the landfill. And, so the more that we can take pride in our own properties and insist that the properties surrounding us are kept up, the better our property values will be, the better our whole feeling of community pride will be. So I am very, very much in favor of doing something, whether it's being quicker to enforce our ordinances, or strengthen our ordinances, or do the fining when it is repeat offenders. Part of it is educational, part of it is obviously financial, but a lot of it is just the mental, what we will accept, and I think it definitely is time that we do not accept the level of blight that happens. I know even driving around, you know, I was part of the group that cleaned up the East Street property, and driving up and around the corner, there's, there are a number of other properties that should be on our list as well, so I think we need to get tougher. I think we need to get tougher, and I'm willing to be a bad guy, so...
Yeah, you can give out the notices.
I'll do it.
I'll work, I'll go with you.
Well, all right. That lady's sheltered.
I had one more question. Do we have a cost for what the cost for cleaning up the rest of the materials from the McConkey property is?
I think from the actual burn down, which it was an emergency situation, the fire department wanted debris cleared so they could complete their investigation, I wanna say Public Works incurred $20,000? Somewhere around there.
It was roughly $20,000.
And then, I just signed an invoice for a little over $4,900 to do the balance of the site and get it cleaned up. The contractor who did it did tell me, I mean, they documented a little bit of what they're referring to as in-kind labor, because costs went way over what they had estimated, basically about double what they had estimated, because there was a lot more concrete and items involved that weren't apparently visible, unfortunately, so we had no more budget, I couldn't exactly pay more, but they still proceeded with the cleanup and did it, hopefully they can write it off as taxes at the end of the year.
So will that $20,000 and then that cost for that, will that be put on the lien on the property?
That's what I'm assuming. We haven't done that yet, because I literally just signed off that last bill, but now the next step would be to compile those costs and then file a lien against the property.
I have had conversations with our city administrator about some ideas with that, and the other two commissioners, I'm sure, are talking to him about that, and so, we, good job on getting it cleaned up and whatnot, and, you know, obviously, it's kind of one of the deals, if we were a city that was rolling in money, we could probably throw a lot more money at this and do a lot faster, but, you know, we have some budget things that we need to take care of, so...
That's good.
Sure.
I know that some communities as well do, and they're probably wealthier communities, but they do like incentive programs for people to keep up their properties, and, you know, maybe we can look at that in the future as well.
In Canada, they get a break on their property taxes as an incentive, if they keep their property up, and that property looks nice, so there's ways of doing it.
For everybody?
For, yeah, for everybody who keeps their houses, their yards and houses.
I don't know if I'd go in that direction, I mean, you gotta give me a check, you know...
But it's different things that they have on a list that you need to do to be able to do this.
Oh, extra, extra clean.
Yeah.
I, the community I worked in, not to interrupt, but I kinda did, the community I worked in before coming here had, and I don't know if Steve Goins had brought this up in previous years, but they had what were called the Mayor's Well Done Awards every year, and it was very well-received by the community. And what the Mayor's Well Done Awards were, I mean, you didn't get any monetary incentive, you didn't get any tax breaks, anything like that, what you got was what we used to jokingly refer to as the trivet, you know, the little, it was basically a plaque that had the city seal on it, and it said, you know, you got a well-done award for, they'd give it out for any number of items, be it a commercial renovation, residential rehabilitation, residential landscaping, you know, and it was nominated by all kinds of people, you know, neighbors would nominate their neighbor, it could be a commissioner nominating, it could be staff members, and we would limit it to a certain number, you didn't wanna just have this gargantuan, you know, 5,000 awards every year, we'd usually have five, six, or seven of them, and it was surprisingly stiff competition for this. I mean, people would go above and beyond on some of their landscaping jobs or their renovations, hoping to get one of the awards, and they'd be seriously let down if they didn't get one for that year, so...
I like that.
Well, I'm not exactly sure that would take care of the people that weren't hauling the cars out of their thing.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's more of a, possibly a more higher-class neighborhoods, like they're competing on Christmas tree lights and things like that.
Or that, yeah.
But it's good, good discussion, yeah, maybe we do that, it's good to have the discussion, and I think we all are pretty much on the same track on wanting to clean our city up and to put a little more enforcement into it and abate and stuff, and so, when we have our next retreat and we talk about next year's budget, hopefully, we can find some money and we might increase the abatement budget and turn up on doing a little bit more of this stuff. So, did you have more in your report you wanted to tell us?
That's about it. I just brought up the little sites, kind of as a heads-up, because I'm forecasting you may get a few calls as we move on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, evidently, you can send it mine in Kathy's way.
Yeah, you guys, have a little van they drive around, that'd be all right. All right, next is another general public comment period, Marilyn said you wanted to speak a little more.
I did.
You're up then, okay.
I was just saying, Ms. Michael.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, anyone else signed up?
Yes, we have Mike Olson.
Mike Olson, I wanted to follow up on the tail end of Jason's here. I spent four years as a commissioner when we instituted the abatement program, and I'll see if I can remember these things. We're owed something like $80,000 from Parkview Manor that we leaned, tore down, we're owed something on the library, lot across from the library that was probably in the $20,000 or $30,000 range, we're still owed. There's Washington Street, I believe, we still own that or are owed on that, and now there's the McConkey property that we're still owed on when we lean on it. So, to my knowledge, we haven't gotten any money back from the abatement program yet that we've put in, and now we're talking about paying to tear down the bowling alley, another $50,000 to $70,000. And I'm a developer builder, I think that property is a real dog, I don't believe that anybody's gonna ever buy it and develop it, so I kinda question this tactic of us paying for tearing down buildings of owners that just basically wait us out, and I just don't see the benefit in spending another $50,000 to $70,000 of taxpayer dollars on this next property possibly, that how long, I mean, we've been waiting on Parkview Manor for 10 years, 12 years, and haven't even put it on the market. Washington Street's a buildable lot and hasn't sold, so I think we need to look at a little bit different tactic. Instead of spending $50,000 to tear this... Instead of spending $50,000 to tear this building down, maybe we should give it to the city attorney to, I don't know, maybe they need to be bonded or something if they're going to own that property and let it be neglected and derelict. What liability do they have if it falls or burns down? We're going to pay the cost of cleaning that up too. Why aren't these property owners hammered a little harder instead of letting their properties go to the point where the city has to step in and do the work that they should be doing all along? And if they don't want to do it, somehow, I'm not an attorney, foreclosed or something on it, this is just a ridiculous program if we're going to continue to basically do their job for them and expect them, look at McConkey. I mean, I've been here for 35 years and he's been an issue like this for 35 years, will not work with the city, will not pay the city for what he's got owed into it, and you're never going to get the money out of the guy. You're going to foreclose on it, which is going to, or put a lien on it, and then what are you going to do with it? It's not a great neighborhood to want to build in. I just don't see the benefit analysis on this whole thing. If you continue to spend probably close to $200,000 under this program in abated properties and we have $0 come back on it. So that's my opinion on this whole thing. And I'm the first one, and I've, my own personal business, I buy these abated properties, but they have to have some value to them and they have to have a reason for, you know, wanting to go in there. But just to go in there and clean them up because it's a public nuisance, it's a great idea, but it's just not, I don't believe what the city should be in the business to do and spend our money doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you sign in?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Forrest Cooper.
State your name for the rig.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad, 807 South 14th. I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Mike's talking about here. I was very, very much remember a lot of the discussion when the abatement plan was put in place, and I had a lot of these same concerns that Mike brought up. And some of the possible suggestions that I've brought into it too are possible other incentives to get these building owners to maybe actually improve their properties rather than just take them down. And we could do like a facade improvement program, something that's more about investing in what the public sees, which will give the building owner a jumpstart to do something with their property. Now, the bowling alley building, I've done a lot of research on that one too, and it is kind of too far gone at this point. And that property, Mike made a really good point, and he said it's kind of a dogged piece of property. We have to remember that properties down there, they're in the 100-year floodplain. They're built on a lot of fill. There's a lot of negatives to developing a piece of property like that. So rather than banking on a developer buying it, maybe we should start thinking about ways the city can utilize those properties. And I've also, I've actually talked with the manager at Domino's there about that building and got kind of some of his ideas on if he would support possibly having a food court or some area there for, like, the food trucks, to have a public space that's owned by the city. So as you start thinking about the properties, don't just think about them as, this is just kind of generic piece of property, we'll be able to sell it and recoup our costs. Maybe look at each piece individually and say, is this going to be a viable piece for somebody to develop? Or is it something that could maybe better suit the general's, the public's interest or something like that? So I just want to kind of echo what you said, Mike. I think you have some awesome points, and let's really think about those. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll turn it over to our city administrator for some final touches.
One thing, we are going to change a couple of job titles. So this, we hope, is going to help with recruiting. We're changing the management assistant role to assistant city manager, and then city administrator to city administrator.
City manager.
Sorry. City manager.
Yeah.
Job duties don't change, but job titles will. And then we hope to have some upcoming news on that assistant city manager role.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be September 19th at 6:00 PM in the evening. This meeting is adjourned.